Be used on what we actually write in and say that we're gonna use it for forty-nine percent of it can be used for anything else that we need, that we need, that's all we use.
Where's the grant coming from?
From the agriculture department.
The city can use that forty-nine percent on anything they want or to have to do with infrastructure improvements to the city.
From the way I understood the deal, and I'm just telling you what I understood, that if we can use the fifty-one percent of, if we have, if there's money left to spend, we can use it on anything we need to use it on.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So, I don't think we're gonna have any dissenting opinions on that, right? We're gonna try to get free money, and I mean, I'm gonna push real hard for most of them to be able to try to fix some of our roads. But that's, that's after we got the money, so we're, we're talking about approving this resolution? I motion we approve it.
I'll second.
A motion to second. Helen?
I.
Glenn?
I.
Discuss and vote to take action to approve proclamation translating Brownspur to Purple Heart City, particularly date signing of the proclamation. Approval straightforward.
It's kinda like when we just did that motorcycle awareness thing, I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
A motion to second.
May I make a comment? Because there's a whole lot of requirements you have to, the city has to do and approve to be able to become a Purple Heart City. So if you haven't did your research, I have a copy of the research. Of how and, and requirements to be a Purple Heart City, you just can't pass it and say, "I'm gonna be one." There are requirements that you have to do to be able to become a Purple Heart City.
You say you got them?
I do have the, the information. If you want me to go over some of the items, I can go over to some of the items. My name's Cliff Brummels, I live on one-four-one-four-zero Lompine Street. I'll go over to some of the requirements to become a, a Purple Heart City. Little bit of back history, if you didn't know, Henderson County is recognized already as a Purple Heart County. At November eleventh, they're gonna have a ceremony in Athens for the Purple Heart Association. Also, in the city, you must have either a living or deceased individual that been living in the town of Brownsboro to qualify. You also must contact, uh, a local chapter that can help us with the paperwork. The local chapter is DFW Mid-Cities Chapter fifteen thirteen out of Athens, Texas. There's also in the state of Texas twenty-two chapters presently, with over four thousand recipients that have the Purple Heart. And keep in mind, the only way a purple person can have a Purple Heart has to be wounded in battle. So, uh, they gotta be shot or something like that to be able to come back. Can't be just a, uh, you get injured or something, you're gonna get a Purple Heart. No, you, you, you gotta actively, um, shot by, by some, by a weapon. The first thing the board, the city has to do is, which you mentioned already, you must come up with a proclamation. There are samples of, of example, samples out there that you can follow. Then the proclamation must, uh, be taken to the chapter for review and the county. Then after that, the, uh, comes for signing, after, after all that's been approved. You refer it to the county clerk. He'll be tasked to help you, um, work up the proclamation, and then you'll send a copy to the, for review and approval before it's finalized. Also, um, the veteran services at, in this case in Athens, has experience at reviewing to make sure it meets its qualifications. Once the proclamation is completed and approved, the individuals you're working with will set up a presentation. It'd be, I'm gonna read from, from what I researched. It would be helpful if they could place it on the agenda at least two weeks in advance. Because this gives you time to contact other veteran organizations to attend the meeting, the ceremony. For you to contact newspapers, radio stations, and vice versa, and veterans organize, organizations. If the meeting and, and cer- uh, meeting and ceremony can be televised, uh, can be recorded upon, uh, approval. After all that's done, then you can order, the city can order the, uh, the sign. Sign looks like this, it has, you have Brownsboro, Texas, this is an example from Bedford, Oregon. You have Brownsboro, Texas, and it says Purple Heart, um, Heart City. Either the city can raise the funds to pay for that sign, or you can get, you can do fundraising for outside organizations to help you, be able to purchase that sign. After all that's done, then the, uh, the state and the legislature will introduce the bill of, and reservation to the state for us to become a Purple Heart recipient. They also wanna look in some of our records to see if we have any Purple Heart recipients in the first, the city of Brownsboro.
I know my grandfather, I mean, he's, he's passed, but he had a Purple Heart from World War Two, so.
So we wanna get, we wanna acquire all that information, 'cause that'll be help to be able to.
Do you have a process for a proclamation?
Say again?
Does it have to be a person alive?
Could be, a person that's a Purple Heart can either be still living, or it can, or could be deceased. We have a lot of soldiers that are currently walking the street because of all the, uh, uh, deployments and stuff. A lot of them get, get shot, get wounded, and there's a lot of soldiers out there that have Purple Hearts. But.
Does your grandfather, do you have access to his DD two-fourteen?
So you have, you have to be able to, for us to put it in the registry, we have to have, um, some type of documentation. We're gonna have to provide to the state under the, the Purple Heart Association to recognize those individuals.
Can it be a relative that did not reside in Brownsboro, like my grandfather? He died in World War Two, and he received a Purple Heart.
Depending on where you research, like, I spent two or three hours today. Some of them, some of the research says, um, they must re- have resided in Brownsboro.
And some of it says it can be relevant.
And some of it says elsewhere, so that's why it's important to get a hold of a chapter, find out what the, what, um, their, what they, uh, request and to require for us to become a Purple Heart.
I say that you're always lucky, right?
But we just can't take it to assumption.
They, that's who you've got to touch. I got a call from the mayor in Chandler last month, said that they were gonna become a Purple Heart City, and it was Brownsboro unrest. So he put me, I bagged the gentleman in my email, he sent me, I believe he's written a chapter. He said that once we do this, they will help us with everything, and come out and put up signs on each end of the county, or each end of the city.
Have, you have to, um, get a chapter to basically help you with the process.
Okay, but personally, 'cause you gotta do the proclamation.
Gotta do the proclamation, we have to send it to the county clerk, we gotta get it approved, and all that, and then we can go to the next step. If, if the city, if you guys need any help, I'm more than happy and available to help you with the proclamation.
Thank you, Cliff. Well, I say we do it.
We gotta have a motion to second. Motion to second.
I.
I.
Motion to second.
You can tag me on a three. I put out for three bids and only got one back, and then, and I did have an email here that Friday afternoon, apparently I got two more. So, you can tag me back to next month.
I'll get with that, I'll make a motion to table it to next month.
Motion to second.
I.
I.
Mr. Davis?
Thanks, pretty obvious, 'cause I do have a follow-up statement that I'll have to read. Uh, I am resigning from the appointment of, uh, the building's own committee. This is your official office, please sign my sort of. I hope y'all be a little patient with me as I read this, uh, it's kind of emotional, so, uh, appreciate your patience. The reason I attended, started attending city council meetings was in attempt to rectify the city building ordinances that were outdated. Knowing that we could not go backwards but forward, as Mr. Gardner has said many times, it is why I decided to run for city council, to help bring a little more clarity and integrity to this process. Obviously, someone felt very threatened by me running on April fifteenth, someone mailed out a very damaging letter to people in this community containing false accusations that not only ruined my reputation, that down, were downright lies and put a target on my back, so that I no longer feel safe in this community at certain events. I am not a person that believes in using social media. I reported this to Chief of Police Medina, and insisted that he allow me to fill out a complaint and take a report for me. I was allowed to fill out a complaint, I was never interviewed. After numerous months with no follow-up from the chief, not even an interview or updates of who I thought it might be, or why someone would do this to me, I was forced to hire a Texas attorney. I hire other attorneys for business purposes, but for this one, I needed one, dealt in Texas. And a private investigator to look into this matter further. The reason I hired an attorney is because the chief would not even give me a copy of my complaint. Several requests were made as public information, I was entitled to a copy of my complaint, he refused to give it to me, um, that I filled out. I was not given that complaint until my attorney, Rick Freeman, requested this through the city attorney. My attorney was eventually provided a copy of my complaint. After multiple months of no response or contact from the PD, stating it was because I had hired an attorney, the PI I hired finally made contact with the chief and learned that the three unopened envelopes that contained letters had been sent to a crime lab in the Metroplex, and in fact had four usable prints, and still no further investigation had been conducted. Not only, not only on his only suspect, which I was on, was Tracy West. At which time, my PI made contact with her, and she was more than willing to not only give her prints, but to take a lie detector test. My PI made arrangements to obtain fresh sets of fingerprints from acting to the system. Fingerprints in a criminal thing, having been told to me, cannot be electronic fingerprints. They have to be the old-fashioned ones with ink. The electronic ones, I am told, are not accurate fingerprints for a criminal deal. The PI then returned the prints, taken from the Ca- Canton Police Department, were brought back to the police department. He witnessed the chief placing them in an evidence bag sealed and mailed to the crime lab. Since my PI is a former police officer, assured, assured me that the print results should be returned to the Brownsboro PD by now since it's been over two months. That's been confirmed from multiple police departments to me that two months is a little ridiculous, but whatever. All this seems very suspicious for a number of reasons. One of which, the police chief told Mr. Brummels approximately two weeks before the election, that he knew something was coming down the line. Have you ever interviewed that person? That's pretty suspicious, why no interviews, not even myself. None of the seven people that ran for that election for those three seats were ever interviewed, to my knowledge. I don't know about the three that sit on here, but I talked with the rest of them, nobody was ever interviewed. So, um, which makes one wonder if he knew, and that was why he never interviewed anybody. The information from what had been the person's prints that submitted to be analyzed. So in six months' time, there has been little to no investigation into this crime. There has been no response from the police chief to myself, my attorney, or to the city members, citizens. I find this as a victim to be very unacceptable. The police department's job, if I am not mistaken, is to protect and to serve the public. I would like to think protect victims and to catch criminals would be important enough to this department to at least conduct interviews from all the other candidates, especially myself and the, the victim, which I have never been interviewed. Since it's been over six months, and in six more months, in May of twenty-twenty-five, the city will be holding another election, at which time the mayor and two city council seats will be up for reelection. I have spoken to one city council member that fears that this may happen to them. Is this a way that this person is using to control who gets elected and who runs for this city council? It would seem so. I know that, uh, this is an election interference case, I've heard Mr. The Chief tell me it's a civil, it is not a civil crime. There are three crimes, two of which are felonies. Election interference is a felony, libel is a crime. Using the United States Post Office to commit fraud, and with this case, that's already been proven, is also a felony. So it's not something to be taken lightly, this should have been taken a little more seriously. Now, I understand that the chief for many, for years was understaffed, had a lot of pressure on him. And if he could not investigate this crime, he should have passed this, this investigation on to the county, the state, to the federal government. Okay, but not to do any kind of investigation at all, not even to interview me. It is totally unacceptable. Now we're facing another election in six months, is this gonna happen again, 'cause person's still at large? Miss West hasn't been cleared, nobody else's fingerprints have been taken, there's been no investigation whatsoever. So, um, I have, everyone who attends these meetings has seen how I feel about social, I hate social media. I've made that very clear. But in the past week, I have seen how social media gets people's response, gets the county in here, gets the state, gets the local TV station in here. I would prefer not to have to go there, but if something doesn't happen, I'm not above going there. All I'm asking is for somebody to do an investigation. I did go to the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office today, I spoke with the county sheriff, he will be looking into this. I also went to the district attorney's office of Humboldt County and spoke to them as well. So hopefully they can.
Henderson County.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm hoping they can either light a fire under, for this investigation, or that they can at least assist the chief in getting some kind of an investigation going. The citizens, I deserve better. I've done nothing but tried to improve the city, tried to make the city a better place. Mr. Gardner said it, can't go backwards, I wasn't going backwards. Everything I did up until that letter came out was to try to better the city. I deserve better, and so does this citizens of this community, and they need to know that the election process is fair, not corrupt. Thank you.
I would just like to add something since my name has been brought into this. I was never once notified, I was never once contacted by Brownsboro PD, anyone in this department, city staff, anything, that I was the only suspect, until his PI called me that day, asking my, asking me for my prints, and asking me to give a statement, which I readily did, and as he stated, set up the next day to go give my prints. No problem, I don't have anything to hide. Now, what I wanna know is, there were seven people running for three seats. Who else is gonna give their prints, willingly go give their prints? Every one of us needs to submit our prints, every city staff member, every elected official. Go submit your prints, and let's all get cleared and get this resolved. Who's up, who's gonna do it?
I'll get my prints, my prints are out there.
My prints are in the federal, the FBI database, they have been for eleven years. But those, these don't count. You have to go give inked prints. The only way that your prints are gonna be in file and in the database that they're matching these prints to, is if you've ever been arrested.
About twenty-five years ago.
Well, they, they may be, or they may not be, I can't speak to that, but they have to, they have to be the old-fashioned ink prints. You have to have been arrested, or your prints are not in the file. If your prints are on file for another type of situation, I know Dusty might be, Susan may be, I don't know about Jacob's licenses. I was for respite care for the foster system of Smith County and Henderson County. I had to go get FBI background, and my fingerprints had to be submitted. But that same database is not the criminal database that they are matching these prints to, so therefore, everyone has to give fresh prints.
I'm happy to.
I'm happy to.
I haven't done anything wrong, so.
I won't do it tomorrow, 'cause the band's going to sing, but I'll do it another day.
So, but the actual agenda item was Mark Davis's resignation. And, uh, uh, Mark, did he leave early?
Yeah.
So, I was gonna ask how him resigning helped, but I guess if he doesn't wanna serve, then we, you know, I'm certainly not gonna compel anybody to do it, but so.
Who else is on that full committee?
The committee never got going, we couldn't get enough members.
So we need to work on that.
Jason and Glenn were appointed, Jason, Glenn, and Mark Davis were all appointed during the meeting.
So, as for the agenda item, um, I'd say I motion we approve his resignation.
I'll second.
I.
I.
I was just gonna say something, first of all, I didn't know a lot about all that that was, that was going on or whatever, but, I mean, if that happened to one of y'all, I mean, y'all could understand, y'all would be highly, highly pissed about that too, you know what I'm saying? I come down here to be honest, guys, about the whole deal with this kid missing, okay? Supposedly, he went missing on the eleventh of September, and I say, kid, I don't, I don't even know how old he is, but supposedly, one of the police officers seen him at the apartment complex, and that's what was told to Mr. Ivan. But then Mr. Ivan never went to the apartment complex to knock on doors, I mean, and now I'm hearing this, I mean, what's, what's going on with, following up with some of this stuff in our city, guys? I mean, I got kids, I got grandkids, but, I mean, my God, if my kid, one of them come up missing, I would damn sure want the police department to be on the phone, calling the volunteer firefighters, somebody, I mean, we have resources in this family. But my understanding, other than the Channel Seven News, nothing's been done.
That's not true.
Well, I, I'm just going off what I, what I'm seeing, okay?
But, uh, the chief's not here tonight, uh, but I will tell you that's not true, so.
I can say personally, I've been up here where he's gotten tips, and Henderson County wouldn't help, Eustis PD wouldn't help. He drove to Eustis to follow up on tip.
See, and that.
I was sitting in his office when that happened.
Well, I'm, I'm just hearing stuff that they're saying nothing's been done, okay? I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I've seen where I grew up at, my dad was in law enforcement for all of my life.
I can say that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just here part-time, but, uh, there have been leads that have been followed up with the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has gone out and searched properties and stuff like that.
But when did that start?
Uh, that was, what, last week, when I got, we got that tip?
So he went missing in September eleventh, and this is what's happening?
Well, like I said, uh, that was, that was one incident that I know of. I'm not here Monday through Friday, I, I, like I said, I work part-time. But anytime that we, I know that I've heard of a tip, the sheriff's office has gone out there. They do have an investigator that's been assigned to this case, and they are going out and trying to find out leads.
But I think that the whole issue was, it wasn't taken seriously for a long time, until just maybe the last seven days, ten days? That's the issue. So, I mean, and Mr. Ross said that it wasn't being ignored, but for how long?
I don't think it took some time to really decide he was missing.
This isn't, this isn't a minor child, right?
No.
No.
He has schizophrenia, he has a mental illness.
I'm, I'm not speaking of that, I just wanna make sure it wasn't mine, it's.
What does it matter, it's a missing person.
I, I will be happy to discuss this with you after the meeting, this isn't on the agenda, we're not even supposed to talk about it. So, I'm not trying to avoid anything, but we're supposed to follow the rules. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, may I, may I speak, please? Amber, we get on, y'all get on to us all the time for not following the rules. So, if this needs to be followed up on, then that's something that we can be discussed, but it's not on the agenda. So we, we're not even supposed to talk about it in this meeting. I mean, we can listen to y'all talk, so if I, if you want to continue to talk about it, but I can't, we're not supposed to respond.
I don't, I don't need you to respond.
Okay, alright, then.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what you come here and say, it's always, everybody out here, whether it's me, whether it could be Joe Schmo, you guys think it's a personal attack, and it's not, we're asking questions because we live here and we're worried about things that aren't getting taken care of.
I don't think this, any of this is a personal attack on me.
You didn't have to respond just now. I'm putting my opinion as a resident of this town.
Yeah, but you missed your opportunity, you should have done it this, when we had the open.
It's open at any time, it's open at which it is.
Not by rule in the state of Texas, no it's not.
But if it's not like.
This is not an open forum.
Agenda, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get. But if it's not on the agenda, what are y'all gonna do, wait until next month to put it on the agenda? I mean, 'cause I mean, this, I mean, doesn't matter one way or another. A person should.
You have to speak before.
That's on life. Like, it should be more important.
He brought it up and you let him speak, and so then.
And I, and I apologize, I didn't know how.
Oh, it's okay that it's you, though. That's one problem right there, a case in point, and you could smirk about it all you want.
I'll smirk, but what did you?
But he brought it up and you, y'all were respectful, but when I.
But that's not what he started with, he brought that up in the conversation, that's not what he started with.
Okay, and I was adding on to that.
Let's, let's, we can't just keep doing it, 'cause everybody will sit there and have another opinion, another opinion, another opinion.
But I've came here before and said, can I use my three minutes in another time to speak? Because there are things brought up throughout the council meeting that you don't know are going to be brought up, and then you can speak on them, that has happened plenty of times. So, again, the rules, what are the rules? Are we supposed to follow these rules, or do the rules only apply to people who are, who work for the city, who are on the city council, but the rules don't apply, I mean, wait a minute, the rules don't apply to the people who work for the city, or sit on the city council, but then the rules apply to us, and you're telling me that I have to follow them and use my three minutes when I was told to, instead of when something is brought up? So which one is it?
Should have happened at the beginning of the meeting.
But this, that's what I'm saying.
Unless it was on the agenda, then you have to take it up at that time.
But if something is brought up, I've asked before, can I speak and use my three minutes later in the session, and I've been told yes?
Well, if I read this thing right, if I understand it right, it's, it's. Well, if I read this thing right, if I understand it right, it's, it's
I mean, who understands it? That's, that's
I didn't.
You're saying if I understand it right, you're the mayor.
Well, I, I'm just saying, I understand it to be at the first of the meeting when we are at the time, an item is brought up on the agenda. And that wasn't even on the agenda. Open business. Update on fencing around the
So, I met with Cory out there and we looked at it. Uh, we did get two fence companies to come look at it, but, uh, they're holding off on it right now because they're actually going to change it. One deal is he has to rim track hasn't raised that fence without the inlet where the water comes in. And then also, they didn't have an exact measurement of the back of it yet because the dirt piles were still there. They were pulling them down. So, for the time being, we haven't actually got hard set bids yet because they still got to kind of do some more work, so.
Well, the fence is going to be the last thing, right?
Yes, yeah, it's going to be.
Right, okay. Uh, so, we just don't know cost yet, okay?
No, they don't have exact footage yet. Like I said, just because the way the dirt piles and stuff weren't exactly where they want to put it and then how they're going to lift it right there at the entrance way, so. That's something, he's supposed to be making this back out there. Like this coming with, with the fence companies and they can all have their measure and all that. At that point, the rest of that on top will be completely pulled down, so they'll have, they can get exact footage and everything. That's all we got.
But sidewalk going through.
So, sidewalks, talk to Cory on the right-hand side. Over there on the school side, we do have easements through there as far as the city road.
Sorry, so school side, north side of, we're talking about north side of Ingram, or I'm sorry, north side of Salyers closest to the highway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, on the school side, uh, up there by your house, that walk, that area up there, we do have all the way to that fence. But if there is, we'll have to get with Atlas because there is a gas line out there, so that's, and on the other side, where all the houses are, we do have some stuff, but it kind of moves in and out. And so, he thinks we'll have plenty of room there, but we'll probably actually have to survey a couple of areas in there. If we want to do it on the side where all the residential houses are at.
So, if you want to do it on the south side, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I know we talked about at one point, but like I said, whenever they're doing the road, the side that they were taking up, if they're really concerned with, it was going towards the school. Right there, they, they used that corner mark where the road existed. So, not every property does he have the exact measurements on, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
He was just making sure that the road didn't fall into any property. So, once he had even, you know, just a foot of clearance, he kind of let that one go on that side. Because it was the other side, we, we lined that road just a little bit, but we went on the school side of the north side.
Well, I, 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 look, looking at it because I drive down it multiple times, Dave, right? So, there's a bunch of telephone poles on the south side too. So, it seems like it's going to be a lot harder to fit a proper sidewalk in there that's not zigzag around telephone poles. So, um, I mean, I think if we, especially if we do have the easements, it makes a lot more sense to put it on the north side of the road. There is one section where we'd have to do dirt work because of a hill. Uh, so, um, but we don't, we don't have any idea how much it's going to cost, like, to actually put them in.
Jason has an idea of mine.
I had a concrete guy come out before I ever brought it up, just to see it. It was at twenty grand.
But that was only down to Ingram though, right? That wasn't because of
That was from Dusty's driveway to the entrance of the high school. That wasn't even all the way to Ingram.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, and that's what I feared is this thing's going to be very expensive for me on that money. I mean, I wanted that, I mean, I, he sees his kids walking around. Uh, but it really is the all the way down the sewer. And then we need another one that goes up Ingram, but, you know, uh, we got to start somewhere. So, you're going to continue to follow up on this?
Yeah, he can, he can actually get it completely surveyed and all that. Uh, I do have a gas going where I talked to Neil. I mean, in theory, we have a reason, I heard, we have to ask for permission, but same thing I said, we'll be at that point, concrete over top of the gas line.
Yeah.
So.
Right, but I'm sure that happens regularly. I mean, it's just one of those things, they need to get to their gas line and probably get a jackhammer up their sidewalk, so. Which would not be ideal.
An update on liquor license and locations in Brownsville.
Veronica and her husband owns El Presidente, has bought the red building across the street and has applied for the license for the store.
Is that something we have to?
TABC should be contacting us one day this week and then I'll find out more about what this city will be required to do.
Okay. So, we're talking about the one right across the street here?
Right over there.
Well, there's, there's that old tire shop that they've been upgraded now too, but we're talking, we're talking about, yeah.
Is there any kind of requirements on how far it has to be from a school?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's lots of those. Uh, it's far enough away from my daycare and the churches. I still had a question whether it was at a thousand feet of, of the school. Uh, because their, their property at the corner of the football field there is fairly close and it's a thousand feet. They have to be notified and I think they have. I mean, that's not, that's not really our thing, I don't think. I don't think, you know, I think that's between the school, TABC and whoever's applying for licenses. But that was my concern. And if they want to put it there, I guess it's fine. If we're going to get one, I sure do wish it would be on the east side of town where, um, but, you know, it's not my concern.
The distances go from the front door out to the center of the highway down to where the, the current and go back into the, I mean, it'll go down to the administration building where it would go to the front door. It's just going to be well.
Well, no, that's for churches and hospitals. Um, it's different for
Daycare's property line, property line.
Yeah, right, yeah. And I think it may be a choice to, that's the
Same thing with the football field being that close.
Right.
Football field.
Right, so I'm, I'm worried that that's going to be too close, but I think the city has to, or I'm sorry, the school district has to object to that. I don't know that that's something that we get involved in, but we should probably follow up and make sure. Um, I mean, at least that the school district knows. I don't know if TABC contacts them?
See, I don't either. I guess I, I could just wait. She said they should be calling me in the next few days, so. If I hear from them by, by Thursday, I'll contact.
Will you ask that question?
Sure.
Mr. Ronnie?
They were still cleaning up around the gun and sewer plant. It's passing on Ingram and Willow Street. And you, some of that dirt from the truck inside over there to fill in some places that the park a little mowing left to be done.
Well, overall, everything's been running fairly smooth. Uh, we've had a couple of electrical issues, but I believe our electrician has all them ironed out. And, uh, the dirt project out there, they're getting close to finishing it. They're not looking or they're going to go off in time, so everything's going pretty good in overall.
I understand there was some people confused or concerned that I put this, put the agenda on the Facebook page. The synergy is in the process of moving this from one domain to another from dot U S to dot gov. Friday afternoon, I mean, it must have been when it started my radio, it took down my, my email. I had internet, I didn't have email. Uh, so, I went ahead and put it on the Facebook page. I cannot do it on my phone, on the website, in the building to the councilman and anybody who wants to see this. Now, when anything's put on that website, it has to be ADA compliant, which means I have to run it through and make it OCR, convert to OCR conversion process to get it on the website. So, I cannot, um, do it from my phone. Uh, if the council does not want me to put it on the Facebook page anymore, I will not. It was just something that could not be helped. I did not have access to my email. I did this morning until nine o'clock. So, I apologize for any confusion, but it's just what had to be done to get it out there.
Technical difficulties?
Yeah. And I did call the attorney general today. And if I'm having technical difficulties, which I can prove, then it's not a problem with me not putting it on the website.
Just, uh, we'll move into the next session.